The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona-Cedar Grove Times and the Star-Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, posted on the district, and posted on the district website. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Here.
Mrs. Keegan.
Here.
Mr. Pallack.
Here.
Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here. Good evening, everybody. I apologize that we were running a little bit late in a closed session, so I appreciate your patience. This time I'll open the meeting to the public on comments on agenda items only. Nobody signed up, so if nobody is, I will close that portion of the meeting. We do have a presentation tonight, so we're going to start with that. And, Ms. English, oh, there you are. I knew I saw you come in. So why don't you come, ladies, come on up? What happened to the mic that was here?
We don't need a mic.
For the people at home. We certainly can hear you, but the people at home.
If I get silly with this.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. So I want to introduce you to the Butterfly Garden team, the beautification of the butterfly garden. Mrs. Villanueva, okay, Mrs. Fairclout, and Mr. and Mrs. Howe. We have other members of the team who could not make it here tonight, and they are enlisted, and they give their regrets for not being able to be here with us. So, you know, when I started at North End, you know, I was quickly approached with this butterfly garden idea, this renovation, this rejuvenation project, and to be honest with you, I didn't know anything about butterflies, right? So, you know, Ms. Villanueva was kind enough to teach me quite a few fun facts, and I quickly learned things about monarch butterflies and the lifelong effect the garden has had on our students at North End. This is something that has been ingrained for 20 years, and children come out of their schools talking about their experience in the butterfly garden. You see, this garden offers opportunity to have hands-on experiences that showcase the beautiful life cycle of these butterflies. The students are able to engage in rich discussions, not just inside the classroom, but outside regarding the environmental benefits that these species have to offer, okay? Which I know, they are essential pollinators, right, Mrs. Villanueva? That provide this invaluable service, which allows other ecosystems to thrive. And I am so privileged to be part of this team and witness the rejuvenation of this project. And this has been a phenomenal experience. We've been working all year. We have some fun facts that we want folks to know about monarch butterflies. They travel from North America, or sorry, they travel to Mexico and Southern California, from the Northern United States and Canada, somewhere about 12 to 2,800 miles. They devour a whole milkweed leaf in under five minutes, is that correct? And they eat 200 times their weight in milkweed. And then they can grow 2,700 times their original weight, which is pretty impressive because they're only in their caterpillar stage for 10 to 14 days. So this whole process has really been beautiful to watch. We release, we grow, we watch this whole cycle of these pollinators. Ms. Villanueva is going to tell you a little bit more about the history of behind the garden and why we chose to rejuvenate or if there was a need to rejuvenate.
And I will tell you, the most favorite fact for the children is all the caterpillar does is eat and poop. They're like, "Miss Vee." And then we're like, "Can I hold it?" I'm like, "Sure." And it poops out, and they're like, "Whoa." But it's fantastic. So approximately 20 years ago, North End had every teacher in the building growing monarchs. We had teachers that had written grants that went to Mexico to see their arrival. We had released, we had a parade out in the parking lot, and we paraded around and released hundreds of butterflies at one time. Those teachers have since retired, but I couldn't give it up. I truly do love it, and I think it teaches so much to children. It really does. So around 2012, or around 20 years ago, they created this beautiful garden in our courtyard that looked like a butterfly. And it was gorgeous, but the FSA had granted it, dug it, made it, so the principal at the time was like, "No, you can't touch it, Jenny." I'm like, "But there's weeds, so you can't touch it." So I had to let it go. But around 2012, Ms. Dyer let me go in and start working on it with the children. So initially, it started out that it was just third grade, and we would go out and pull weeds and plant flowers, perennial, annuals, whatever. And by 2015, I was like, "The task is just too big." So now we include the second grade. And what's really, really good about that is my third grade team and I, we train the third graders, and then the third graders become like the teacher, and they train the second graders. So the second graders have some insight when they come up to third grade in the fall. They know what's a weed. They know what milkweed is. A lot of times, we'll go out sometimes, like, walking on to the playground the other day, one of the fourth graders said to me, "Mrs. Vee, do you remember I planted that plant?" And I was like, "I do." And they really take pride in their community, their home. So this is so near and dear to my heart. What I teach in that garden, I can't teach in a classroom. Kids holding worms or bugs, "Is this one good? Is this one bad? What's this?" And there's so much exploration in the dirt, and, you know, it's just amazing. But due to COVID, we weren't there in the spring. I didn't come back for a while after, so it went two years unattended. And it really, as much as I still loved it, became an eyesore. And so then, we spoke to Mr. Bannon, and we were like, "What can we do?" And next thing you know, we formed a team, and things are happening. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate his team and their belief in me and in the third grade team and the second grade teams in getting out there and getting your kids' fingers dirty and having fun. And I will tell you, when a caterpillar becomes a chrysalis, you can't teach that. Everything stops in the room, and kids are gasping, or when they really get to hold a monarch. Because if you go out there when it's cold, they won't fly away. So each kid gets to hold it. When in your lifetime can you do that? So that's my little spiel, but thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy. I'm the president of the NORCA and FSA, and the FSA has always been involved in some way in the butterfly garden. It's always been a part of our budget. We've always tried to help support it with upkeep and supplies. But as Ms. Vee stated, you know, during COVID, it kind of got a little out of control and hard to manage. So that's when we started to really talk about what can we do with that area? What can we make it for all of the students? So not just the third graders, not just the second graders, but the whole school, the teachers, the students, the staff, how can they also enjoy that space? The FSA started asking for volunteers because it wasn't something I could take on myself or the board could take on. So we started asking for parents to come forward, how can they help? And luckily, the Hows, who are new to Cedar Grove this year, right, this year, heard about the butterfly garden, and they wanted to get involved. So I remember Allison and I meeting with Ms. Vee one day, and Ms. Vee had some scribble on a piece of paper of a diagram of something that maybe could go out in that space, and it kind of started us talking, and we all started meeting and thinking of ideas of what could this space become. And we started to get really excited. Everyone had, you know, great ideas and a vision for this courtyard, we're now calling it, that we're putting in outside, we're really excited about. Luckily, the FSA had some extra funds left over from a fund run that we did last year. And after speaking to our membership, the FSA has agreed to a donation of $18,000, which was approved at last Board of Ed meeting, a donation that's going to go towards the garden, the courtyard, to start the project and get it going and make it become a space that all can enjoy. So I'm going to turn it over to Rob now, and he'll show you our vision and layout for what the area is going to look like.
Hello. My name is Rob Howe. I am a partner at BT Property Services, and as Ms. Fairclout just said, we moved into Cedar Grove last year, and we're super excited about this project because we, as a family, want to be able to give back to the community, and we think this is going to be a wonderful way to do it. Ms. Vee's vision, compassion to this project is absolutely amazing. And so we have gone through several versions and renderings of the project as we met as a team, talked about it. Mr. Bannon has given us insight, access to the space, to be able to evaluate what we can and can't do in this space. And we've come up with a vision that we think meets the space's requirements, as well as the ability for our kids to enjoy it for years to come. And that vision is up here in the presentation, and we have decided to put a small wall on the northeast side of this space so that we can level this space off. One of the challenges of this space is it is sloped, and so in order to accommodate the grow beds, the patio, the pavers that are going to be put into the space, we need to get it level. And so we're going to build a small wall on the northeast side of the courtyard. We're going to put a fence up to keep the kids safe, and then we're going to sprinkle in all different types of garden beds, grow beds, areas for the kids to be able to plant, enjoy butterflies, enjoy the flowers, enjoy the space. At the end of the pathway, we have an area where they can sit and, you know, read books, enjoy, meet as a group, meet as an FSA group, whatever the space can allow. And we are excited to be part of it, and we are planning on completing the project this summer so that at the beginning of the school year, we can have a ribbon-cutting ceremony and officially open up the courtyard to our kids. That's it?
That's his part.
That's my part. Now for my better half, my wife.
Hi, I am Allison Howe, his wife. And for those who don't know me, I am also the parent to a second grader at North End and a kindergartner. You'll see here on the, I guess depending on how you're looking, the far side is a flyer that has gone out to our students here, and also we'll have PDF links. And that's our purchase flyer for a legacy paver. The legacy paver will go into the courtyard in either the back portion of the patio or in the walkway. We have done extensive research as to companies that do pavers and do them well, which you may think that, but a lot of companies don't do them well, and the biggest concern we have is to create longevity for this project. If you're getting a paver, we want it to be there. We want this garden to be there for my kids, hopefully my grandkids. And so we're using a company called Paver Art. They're actually local here to New Jersey, and that gives us a lot of great abilities. Number one, because they're local, it saves on cost of shipping the pavers to and from, and because this is not only going to be a one-time ordering period, that way we can have someone go pick up the pavers, drop them off, so you're saving on hundreds of dollars of costs just for delivering. The other great thing about Paver Art is that they have technology that would, in the future, allow us to do great things for this space in a visual aspect. So the back portion of what we're calling is the patio is a large section, and you could actually, we can get them to inlay a paw print with the Cedar Grove colors, an actual panther. And so these are things in the future that, working with the same company, that we can continue to have a relationship with. The other great aspect of them is that we can actually store, when we buy this set of initial pavers, we can store additional ones there, so it would color match. Another concern we have is, oh, if you're going to order a paver now, and then we do another sale, you know, five years from now, how do the pavers match in color? So they'll store pavers for us, and we'll just, you know, whenever we have a sale, they will pick from our stocked pavers, and then we'll be ensured that they're color matched. You'll see it says the pre-sale cost is $60. That is a pre-sale cost for this specific run of fundraising. That is only a $20 profit towards us. The cost of materials are really high, so it's about a $40 cost for the paver and the engraving process. So all of that extra money, although we've gotten the gift of $18,000 from the FSA, there's so much more we could do with this space, and so any additional fundraising money will go to better it at this point in time. In addition to that, we want you to buy them now so that you're not going to pay more for when we do this again. And hopefully, it is a yearly, biannual thing. We're not certain. We're just really hoping that people generate interest in this. There's a 12-week turnaround per the length of the paver process because it's a really specific process. It takes 12 weeks to cure, so that's why we're asking for the timeline of May 24th because we really want to get this in so that kids can start in September and really utilize it. There's multiple payment options, and I know it's small there, but again, the actual flyer will be available online and hopefully sent out to the other schools. And so there's QR codes, and then there's also live links on the bottom, so you don't have to figure out a way to do it. There's going to be PayPal, Cash, or Check, and you can send that to North End if it's not PayPal. I know we've had a couple questions on the PayPal. It says a donation, but this is the only fundraiser that the FSA PayPal is running right now through that specific link. So anytime someone orders a paver, we know it's exactly what it's going for, and we can easily match your name to your set PayPal. The other thing, as I said earlier, that there's two ways to order on, specifically on the flyer, there's the QR codes and the live links. The Google form, which is one of the two links, is, just has four basic questions: name, email, your engraved message, and how you're paying, so we can keep track. You will get an email confirmation from me after we've reviewed your submission to make sure that it follows the guidelines of what the size of the paper and what could be on it. And then there will be an additional email. If you don't do your PayPal or you're going to send in a check or cash, you'll get an additional email from me when the money has been received to the FSA. The pavers are a bit larger than normal ones that you'd see. They are six by nine. We thought that that was just kind of like the best thing for your buck and also really like gave you good optics on your message being seen. There are four lines on each paver and 17 characters per line. That does include spacing, so if you're ordering, keep that mindful. All this information as well is on the Google form, so you're just hearing me rambling, but it's very easy when you actually get on the form. We've had a lot of different submissions, so people are wondering, you know, what can you write? We've had just like a family name. I personally have written each of my kids' names, North End, class of, et cetera. We've had companies do a paver for their specific company. We've had quotes. We even just received a family who graduated in the 1970s and 80s and their four children listed. So I have a lot of more things I could say about this project, but I just want to thank everyone. I know that this is, we started this, I mean, Ms. Vee started this decade. And my husband and I started in September working on it, and we have spent a lot of hours, and from each and every hour, it just shows you how many people are passionate about this school, this school system, this town. And so I want to thank you for supporting this. I want to thank you for supporting our kids and creating a legacy here at North End. So now, that is the end of our presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
They haven't had any questions.
Just to reiterate, the form is on the Friday folder. It will be out every week in the North End Bulletin. It's on the Friday folder. I send it out every week in the bulletin for North End. I message it out to the high school, and I know that the middle school has already sent it out as well. So it is available through multiple formats if you're interested in buying the legacy paper. Thank you so much for your time. I want to thank the team. They are amazing. They worked really hard on this, and this is a great opportunity to give back to the school, the community, and for the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that, and thank you to the FSA for always being a valuable part of everything that happens in all of our buildings. So thank you for that.
It is amazing.
Yes, certainly is. Okay, so we're going to move on to committee reports. We're going to start with Mr. Wilson. How are you this evening?
I'm doing very well.
I'm doing very well, thank you.
Hello, everybody. This is my report. It's been two weeks since the last meeting, and I had a lot to report about then since we didn't have a meeting for a long time, so there's not as much to say today. But I will say that next week is Panther Puff, but that's an in-school event, so not as much of a community event, more of a high school event. I would not be there for that, but it's like powder puff kind of, more, it's looser just because we're still figuring out the rules and stuff, obviously. But yeah, I think it's something really fun of it. It's supposed to be the four grades versus each other. It's like two games, and then the winners play each other, and there's a winner. And there'll be halftime, little mini-games, stuff like that, and it's during our spring pep rally. So we're also going to honor our spring sports during that. Yeah, that's the main thing that's happening now for us. We're going to try and do one last event before the year ends. Not sure if it'll be a spirit week, which we haven't done in a while, or something like that, but that's where we're headed with that. I want to talk about something that kind of stuck with me from last meeting. There was a lady who said that kind of our parents should, or the adults in the community should listen to the children when they speak. And I just want to say real quick that when I spoke last week, at the last meeting about mental health, there were no ulterior motives there, and that's just how I feel. So, yeah. And I think that everybody wants what's best for the kids in this community, and that's very clear. But I also think the world is changing, and as it always does with every generation. And I think it's important to note that we have a different experience than our parents. There's a lot more social media pressure and lots of movements towards that, especially with COVID. So I think it's important to note that while there was one experience that you had, sometimes things do change, and although you haven't experienced those stressors and anxieties, there are new factors in the situation. I feel like some people don't completely understand that, and they're not trying to be like out of malice or anything, but that's just what I meant when I was speaking. I wasn't forced to speak. I heard it was happening, and I asked to speak. So that's just something I want to say because I don't want that to be misconstrued. I think it's important that when children speak, that the community listens because we're the ones who are kind of like seeing the effects of like things as we grow up that are changing, and I think that's just like an important thing. So I just want to say that real quick. But yeah, I'm hoping for a good end to the year in terms of school spirit. We're getting a lot of people for the pep rally. I mean, everybody's coming to the pep rally. We're getting a lot of people involved in actual positions in the pep rally, though. And also, we're getting people involved in Panther Puff, so I'm very excited about that. And I won't actually be there. I will be in Vermont for a music exchange for the music department, but I will be cheering on from my phone. So, yeah. Thank you.
I'm sure you've left it in good hands.
Yes. Our juniors who have positions are kind of taking over. This is kind of like giving them a chance to kind of like lead, and they're all great, so I'm very excited for them because they, first of all, they know more about football than me. So that's good because I don't. But also, they're just, they're great, so I'm excited about that. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Amy, can I tell you, you're right. The students are the voice, and I just want to commend you. You're a great advocate for the students. You come up here, you articulate yourself well. I just want to say you did a great job this year, and, you know, we put you up there for a reason because we knew you'd be great.
Thank you.
So thank you.
It's been great because I was nervous at first, but I think it's nice to kind of, I've never really listened to the board meetings, sorry, until this year. It's interesting to see.
And you got a lot of laughs, too. You stole the show sometimes.
Yeah, thank you. So it's been interesting to see how, like, to see the process and to see like us moving in a positive direction. So that's really cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you are free to go if you want to.
I do need to say for AP Bio, so.
Which you will do fine.
I don't know. Yeah.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. That's a hard act to follow. So moving on to our committee reports. Well, first I want to say that on April 30th, I attended with my fellow board members the Nicholas Storms Playground dedication. And I just want to take, again, another opportunity to thank the FSA of South End and the whole community for really coming together for such a beautiful, well-attended ceremony, even though it was raining. The skies held out for us, but then we moved into the gymnasium area, and there was a beautiful ceremony there. So again, I just want to thank the community that it really does come together, and we see another example tonight. At good times and bad times, this community really does come together. So I appreciate everybody who went out and supported that. So that was a really great event. As far as our board committees, we just had a meeting two weeks ago. We do not have a lot to report on. The focus really has been on personnel, which will be presented in the resolutions this evening based upon Ms. Superintendent Grosso's recommendations. So a lot of our resolutions tonight will be focusing on that. I don't have any other committee reports. Does anybody else have anything? It was really a quick turnaround from our last meeting. Superintendent Grosso, you're up for your report.
All right. Thank you. I do want to reiterate what President Dorr had said. It was a beautiful ceremony, and it was really, it was impressive, but it was also, it was beautiful how the weather held out for that moment when the Storms family cut that ribbon. And it was very, very emotional, very impactful, and then when everybody went to the gym and the speeches that were said. So big, big thank you to the South End FSA, as well as the community, because it was a phenomenal turnout for a Sunday at 11:00. And it was a beautiful, beautiful ceremony, so I do want to echo that. I also want to share that we did participate in Take Your Child to Work Day. I took one of my children to work with me, and I will tell you, we went around to all the buildings, and there was quite the turnout from students. I would say, at the elementaries at least, I could say, it took up one-third, one-third of the population that goes to school at South End and North End individually, they were out with their families at work. And it was also nice to see the staff's children. Every building had something beautiful to offer. It was just, it was a great day, and I think it's such a wonderful thing that the state does, and it's one of the limited days that children are excused from school, so, which is interesting, but it was great. And I really want to just, I'm going to thank the families for taking part in that, and I want to thank the staff for taking part of it. It's a great community day. I also want to take this opportunity, it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we all would not be sitting here if it wasn't for the staff. It is, they, every day, they wake up, they come here, and I've always said this, as educators, we spend more time with families' children than sometimes the families do during the day. And on this board right here, majority of everybody are educators. So it is a big thank you to all the teachers. We could not be moving forward without you, and you are certainly recognized and appreciated in this district. And tomorrow is National Nurses Day, and I would like to say that from our four nurses here, and we have also some phenomenal sub-nurses, they are our first responders when it comes to any type of medical emergency or even when you have to soothe some tears. Band-aids and ice packs are a big deal in schools, and, but the nurses go way above and beyond that. If there is a medical emergency, and we have had plenty of those, and we've actually just had, you know, within the past year, we've had several, you know, emergencies with the nurses' bureaucracy occasion, and they were immediately responsive, and they are part of a fabric of who we are and what we do. So it's a big thank you. You know, we talk about these days and these weeks, but you are recognized always, not just a day, and not just a week. You are recognized always, so we do want to appreciate and thank you for that. And I just want to end with, I love this. This is- is a such a, I would attend this as a high school principal, but I attended the 30-something, I don't, my mind is sticking to the 35th, but I don't want to misspeak. It is the Essex County Academic Scholars Dinner, and it's held at Nanina's in a Park. And every school, public school in Essex County attends this, and the students that are honored are your top two performing students, valedictorian and salutatorian, and it is phenomenal. Families are involved, invited to come. The students are recognized on where they're going to school and what their accomplishments are. And it's just a nice time for the county to come together. We are a large county, and we are very congested. And when you get, when you sit in that room and you look at all the families, and you look at all the administrators, and the counselors, everybody, it's like unreal on the work that is done. So I want to publicly congratulate Nina DeLeon and Isabella Galliotto, who will be going on to UConn in Bucknell studying engineering and marine biology. Phenomenal. So kudos to our kids, kudos to our families, and that's good.
And our staff who got them.
And our staff who got them there. Absolutely. Happy Appreciation Week, right? So there you go. So good stuff, really, really positive things. That's all.
All right, great. Well, that was a great report. Okay, so we have a bunch of resolutions today. We're going to go through them, and we'll comment on any that may need some further explanations. So can I have a motion for G1 through G16?
So move.
Second. Discussion. I just have, I just want to make a comment on G7, which is donations. I would like to thank the high school APT for their generous donation for the communication board for the ABA classes. That came from the B-Site fundraiser, so that will be going up relatively soon, right? So thank you for the high school APT. And then also for the attorney firm of O'Toole and Skrevo for their generous donation of the scholarships for our graduating seniors. So I do want to publicly thank those two organizations for their gracious and generous donations. That's all I have for any discussion, any other discussions? If not, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under the superintendent's report under general administration, can I have a motion for H1 through H5, please?
Move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes, but H1 abstained from SID 1016.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under superintendent's report, human resources, can I have a motion for I1 through I17 and addendum A1 and A2?
So move. Second.
Discussion. I have a couple things I wanted to point out. Under I1, I want to publicly recognize Mr. Bayer and thank him for his commitment and his, all the work that he has done for our high school and our district as a whole. And as behalf of the board, we wish him well as he moves on in his employment journey. So thank you, Mr. Bayer, and lots of luck as you move on. I also want to thank Mrs. Bellandi for the work that she's done in our district and wish her luck as she moves on in her career. I would like to thank the staff on resolution number five, I5. I would like to congratulate our staff members who will be gaining their tenure in the upcoming school year. Most of them are in early September, but we have some others throughout the year, so I'd like to congratulate them. And on I12, I would like to congratulate Ms. Inglis, who will be transferring from the acting principal here at North End to the new position of high school principal. Congratulations to you. We're excited to continue to work with you in that new capacity.
Very good.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to point out on I16, the, we spoke about this at our last meeting. Under the curriculum, Mr. Pallack spoke in length, in pretty depth about the, some of the new positions and the new direction that we are going with in the district. And so I just wanted to point out that I16 kind of gives you an overview of the job descriptions and what those new positions are going to look like. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And that's all I got. Any other discussion with those? All right, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Let's get something.
Okay.
Bring out all these, right? Okay, thank you. And under J, superintendent report for special services, a motion for J1.
Move.
Second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. All right, at this time, I'd like to open this portion of the meeting to public comment. We do have some that have signed up, so I will read our guidelines here. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Please preface comments by stating your name, address, municipality of residence, and group affiliation. Please be mindful of your statement length and keep each statement to the three-minute limit. Participants may not speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. Please direct all statements, questions, or inquiries to the presiding officer, and the presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement, question, or inquiry if it is too lengthy, or abusive, obscene, or maybe deflamatory. These rules may be waived if necessary to protect privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting. So with that said, we have Mr. Reinhardt, who is signed up first.
William Reinhardt, 26 Glenough Roads. First off, really nice to hear that the Butterfly Garden's coming back. I was actually in one of the classes that did that. Of course, I was over in South End at the time, but I still, I actually have a photo of my sister. So really awesome, really glad to hear.
Feel free to purchase a brick.
Oh, I'm planning to. I'm planning to. I appreciate the upsell, though. The, so first off, I guess I'm just, I just, I got some questions on the referendum. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to attend the last few meetings. I tried to watch the last one. I did not finish it, watching it before I got here. Has there been any updates on what we're planning to do with regards to the referendum? Is there a strategy or a price point that you're looking to hit at this point in time?
So we spoke a little bit about this in the last board meeting, so you could get some more information then. But just to kind of give you a brief, the board is continuing to work. We've met with all the building administration to find, to get a better understanding of what the facility needs are in each specific building, and how the instructional needs, and how we can address the instructional needs because they are impacted by facility needs. So the board has met, the committee members have met with each building representative, and we've gotten more information from them. And we're still working with the current, the proposal that was presented several board meetings back, and working with Mr. Bannon on how we can handle some of our facility upgrades through other funds not associated with the referendum. So we are doing a lot of legwork. Do I have any formal report to go out? No, I do not at this point.
Okay, that, I completely understand. This one other, and I realize this may just be something you are not, don't have a stance on yet, but is LRP potentially still on the table to be used? Now, why I ask that is because you have a very large plot of layout that I presume incurs expenses, and so the question would then be if it is no longer on the table, and this seems the most potentially apropos time to use an open building. Is there a cost-benefit analysis that you see being on the table as a possible dispersal of that asset to this board and the proper, possible repurposing of that asset for other needs to potentially handle this, this whole set? Spatial crunch that we face to possibly more teachers, more targeted techniques to act as a different form of mitigation as opposed to actually expanding the real estate that you have for your teaching capacity.
Yes, those are all the things that we are taking into consideration, but LRP certainly is still on the table.
Okay. That's wonderful to hear that it's still there. Beautiful. Nope, that's, the other one would be, and I realize I'm going a little blind here, but I did catch the part about the mental health on the last one, and I just was interested if you could provide some more appointments, and I realize this part is going to be offline, but if there's an organized kind of vision on the mental health stance from a holistic standpoint. Now, what I mean by that is that there was a lot of talk from the comments I did here, very much school-centric, and I'd say very much psychologically-centric, but there's a plethora of other aspects that intersect with mental health, right? We have exercise, we have sleep, we have your diet, your exercise, stretching, technology that intersects with this, right? And external structures, and we have now a loss of social capital that we're starting to see, which is magnifying. We have more things that are vying for people's time, which is resulting in declines in people's actual relationships in the physical domain. And so to me, I see a multi-pronged problem, and the scope of which, now, I understand is wicked, and I, they're not expecting that anybody is going to solve this. If this was a solved problem, that would be beautiful, but it's not because it's a big problem. But I'm just wondering if there's some type of vision about how, within the limited resources that this organization has, right, can try to strive towards as something that maybe the community could help to get more involved and refine as a kind of point of discussion.
So I think I understand what you're asking.
Yeah, I realize that's a lot.
You know, I think we, the district, and the administration and the board have very similar concerns that you're expressing. Mental health is, you know, is a serious issue, and we, we as a board are committed to expanding that and using the staff and the services that we have now, bringing in our, some of our new direction with our Director of Guidance and Counseling to oversee and be able to provide more services in a more efficient way. Yes, we do have a vision, and it's going to be a vision that continues to grow as needed.
Is that a vision that could be, or maybe it does exist in some textual or presentation format that could be dispersed to the public in some form, just because to me, it'd be something to be like, okay, this is what's going on. I just, it would be very informative for me, and I'm sure for everybody involved, and maybe it could be a point of discussion.
Yeah, that's certainly, we certainly can take note of, and once, you know, players, the appropriate players are in place.
Yeah, no, and I understand. I'm not expecting something yesterday at all, so thank you.
Yep, you're very welcome.
Just one, one final, I'll leave this as a thought, right? I'm not set on, I don't have a strong opinion on this, but I've been unable to attend the past few meetings either because of travel or because I was sick. And while I can attend them in a virtual capacity in a viewing, there is a loss of opportunity to engage in this communal aspect in this open forum. And I would just, I guess, put forth the thought of whether it might be appropriate to open it up to individuals to speak in a virtual capacity. Again, very much not sold on whether or not, I think that is the way to do it, but I just thought it as something, because I know if I can't go to work, I can call into a meeting 95% of the time, and that allows the dialogue to persist and maximize contribution to that dialogue. So that's the last thing I just wanted to leave with.
We appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you all for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everything.
Okay, next, Mr. Martinelli.
I'm good.
Okay. Mrs. Casilli?
I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else who maybe didn't have an opportunity to sign up? No? Okay, then I will close that portion of the meeting. Announcement of future meetings. Our next meeting will be June 20th, and that will be in the South End School Media Center, same time, 6:30 executive, 7:30 regular meeting. Again, I apologize for the delayed start tonight. And then the following meeting after that, July 25th, which will be at Memorial Middle School, Middle School, same time, 6:30 and 7:30. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
So favor?
Second.
All right, meeting adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for coming.